All right, I'd like to call to order this special meeting of the Board of Education. It's May 9, 2023. Laura, would you take the role?
Garcia.
Jebhart. Niznik. Here. Raj Paul.
Here.
Sargent.
Here.
Sweeney Moran.
Here.
Ziss.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. It looks like we have two things on the agenda for our special meeting. The first is board member compensation. Rob, do you have an introduction for that?
I'm looking to our team. I don't see Kathleen. We're going to flip-flop the meetings? Okay, so if it's okay, we'll go with our community schools framework update first.
Yeah, sounds great. Take it away.
Thank you. Board Vice President Sweeney Moran, members of the board. Good to see you this evening. Our first presentation will be a review of community schools. Board members, as you will recall, this is an ongoing conversation that we've been having as a board. I would say two semesters ago, there was some clear consensus on looking at the community schools framework as a potential model for BVSD. The team has done a lot of work over the course of time in looking at the model, and then also looking at some of the services that we provide here currently in BVSD that align to the framework. You will see a presentation this evening led by Executive Director of Strategic Partnerships, Bianca Giegos, and Jovita Schiffler, who also works as our extended learning manager. Did I get that right? I'm trying to read sideways on the title, Jovita. And they'll be giving you an update on the framework, and then some recommendations, which will be a bit of a change of course. Just as a preview, as we've really kind of dug into this topic, we're feeling like the elements of the framework are excellent, and that there may be better ways to reach more students and more communities in our districts than thinking about maybe designating one school as a community school. And so you may have had a chance to preview the slides, but to just share that right up front, board members, I think that the team has worked on some really strong ideas to share with you all. So with that, I will turn the presentation over to the team.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Good evening, Vice President Sweeney Moran, members of the board, and Dr. Anderson. We are glad to come before the board with information about the community schools framework for wraparound supports, including current work and next steps. Inherent in the community schools framework is the community and family partnerships theme of all together for all students. Joining me for this presentation is Jovita Schiffer. She is the Extended Learning and Community Programs Manager. Her work includes overseeing our 21st Century Learning Centers and working with community partners who provide programs in these centers. You may recall that the community school frameworks is built on four pillars, which are student supports, family and community engagement, expanded learning, and collaborative leadership. In May of last year, the board was presented with all of the work and services that we are already under in these four pillars. To recap some of those, they are BVSD health services that are providing student support, such as case management, care coordination, dental, vision, health support, and mental health. Family and Educators Together teams bring families together to collaborate with teachers and school leaders and build a strong sense of community and sense of belonging. Family Resource Schools and 21st Century Learning Centers both cover all the pillars with their extensive programs that support families, partner with community organizations and school leaders, and provide extended learning opportunities for students. Family Resource Schools are a partnership between BVSD and the City of Boulder Housing and Human Services to provide programs to some of the highest need schools in Boulder. 21st Century Learning Centers are grant-funded centers established at two BVSD schools, Sanchez and Emerald Elementary School. FRS and 21st Century Learning Centers have frameworks similar to the community schools model and include programs that focus on direct services for students and families. This includes referrals for students to access the health services we offer, including dental, vision, and mental health. Family engagement, resources, and learning opportunities. They also provide extended learning and enrichment for students after school. Both programs are well-established and have been operating for over a decade. We decided to take a step back to examine our existing programs that already offer all four of the pillars. We did an internal evaluation of our BVSD 21st Century Learning Centers. We did an inventory of the health services we offer and those that our partners provide for students and families. We also examined our outstanding partnerships with FRS and the programs they offer. I would like to take a quick moment to thank Wanda Pellegrina Caldas, City of Boulder Family Services Manager. The FRS programs that she oversees are a huge resource and asset to students in our community. We thank her so much for her tremendous leadership and service. We are also so fortunate to have 198 community partners in BVSD. These partners are mutually beneficial, and they allow us to better serve our students and their families. While community partners have multiple areas of focus, we are very fortunate that of the 198 partners that we have, 66 of those support health and well-being. First, we looked at all the integrated student supports we offer. We are very lucky in BVSD that students have access to nurses and counselors in all schools. They provide substance use and mental health support, as well as prevention education. We have 15 mental health advocates. They provide individual and group support. Over the 2021-22 school year, they had 570 referrals. We also are fortunate to have a community resource specialist nurse in BVSD. This nurse provides case management, care coordination, assistance with unmet health needs, health education, and works with partners for school-based health services. There were 186 calls so far this school year. School-based health services include dental and vision screening, as well as vouchers for students to have services completed within the community. Partnership with Clinica provides school-based preventative dental health at 12 schools. This year alone, they've had 686 students and had 1,816 service appointments. Cohort 1 included Columbine, Emerald, Pioneer, Ryan, Sanchez, and Uni Hill. And Cohort 2 includes Birch, Creekside, Crestview, Lafayette, Netherlands, and Whittier. We will be expanding to middle schools in the 23-24 school year. Mental Health Partners is providing mental health support at FRS schools and interventionists at 13 secondary schools. They've had 516 referrals so far this year. We also provide family resource referrals through our community liaisons, FRS outreach coordinators, and 21st Century Learning Centers. Community liaisons connect families to free and sliding scale resources within our school communities. I'll now pass the presentation over to my colleague, Jovita Schiffer, Extended Learning and Communities Program Manager.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Giegos. Good evening. We then did an evaluation of our 21st Century Learning Centers at Sanchez and Emerald Elementary. These learning centers have a framework similar to the community schools model. Monitored by the Colorado Department of Education, the purpose of the 21st Century Learning Center grant is to improve outcomes for students and families in similar ways to the community school model. The centers are required to provide opportunities to help students meet achievement standards in core academics, a broad array of services and opportunities, including programs that provide enrichment, youth development, drug and violence prevention, wellness and nutrition, physical fitness, STEM, and more. It also is required to provide learning opportunities and engagement for parents and families, and referrals to direct services for families and students during after-school hours, such as access to local resources and health services. These centers also partner with community organizations such as Sister Carmen, CU Boulder, Mental Health Partners, and more. The evaluation we performed was done by our senior research analyst, Steve Parker. Our research question was, what are some of the differences in outcomes for students who attend our programs consistently, which we defined as more than 75% of their scheduled programming, compared to students at the same schools who do not participate in our after-school programs? We had four important findings. Students who consistently attended our programs had nearly 10% higher grades than those who attended the same schools and didn't participate. They also had 5.4% higher attendance than non-participants at these schools. 12% more of these students met or exceeded grade level expectations on CMAAS math tests, and over 5% more of these students met or exceeded grade level expectations on CMAAS English Language Arts. The center participants and those who didn't participate were of similar demographics. We also asked Sanchez students how they feel about their after-school classes in their 21st Century Learning Center. As you can see, Haciel Moreno said that tutoring helped him with his multiplication, and Bella said she liked getting to learn how to play the ukulele. We then reviewed our partnership with FRS and the schools they serve. Family Resource Schools have great relationships with the schools and families they serve. They are doing great work with families and students. As like all schools, FRS programs are seeing an increased need for mental health and family resource support among students and families. This has caused the need for reallocation of resources to family support and has reduced their ability to provide after-school programming to serve the number of students who could benefit from it. For example, Columbine and University Hill each had over 200 students who qualified for free and reduced lunch, but the average daily capacity in after-school programming was for 28 students at each of these two schools per day. Our 21st Century Learning Centers are able to serve over 100 students a day because of the 21st Century Grant. While we were examining these systems, the Colorado Department of Education announced a new request for grant applications to fund more 21st Century Learning Centers. We had already considered expanding 21st Century Learning Centers to Angivine and Centaurus to provide a continuum of support for Sanchez and other elementary students in Lafayette through middle and high school. FRS programs that are already doing outstanding work with students also showed a need for additional after-school support. The six schools you see on this slide have over 1,400 students who could benefit from extended learning and family programs. The four elementary schools are FRS schools. Angivine and Centaurus are not FRS schools, but are schools that could benefit from extended learning opportunities. The chart you see here outlines total enrollment, total number of students eligible for free and reduced lunch, and the free and reduced lunch percentage at each of these six schools. Given the strong systems that FRS and 21st Century Learning Centers have in place, we decided to strengthen our partnership with FRS by finding a way to augment their highly-valued after-school programs at the four elementary schools. We also did a needs assessment of all six schools, including meeting with several parents, staff, and all administrators. We also sent out parent surveys to all of these six schools and received over 518 responses. In addition, I met with approximately 100 kids at Angivine and Centaurus. The information gathered resulted in a decision to apply for 21st Century Learning Center grants to fund centers at these six schools. If awarded, this grant will provide $5,400,000 for after-school programs at these schools over a five-year period. We will also expand our partnerships to help support these new centers, such as with the Renee Crown Wellness Institute at CU Boulder and the City of Lafayette. We will know if we have been awarded the grant in mid-May, hopefully by May 15. If we are not awarded the grant in this cycle, we will reapply next year. In the meantime, our 21st Century Learning Centers will continue to partner with FRS to identify new resources that will support expanding FRS programming. We are committed to continuing to seek partnerships and new funding opportunities to support extended learning at all of these schools. I'll now pass it back to Dr. Giegos.
Thank you, Jovita. Our next steps are to secure funding to expand our 21st Century Learning Center model to six more schools, which will allow us to fortify areas where we are seeing significant returns and expand them to benefit more students. Invest resources in what we know is working and already have strong systems in place for, such as our 21st Century Learning Centers and schools with FRS resource models. We will also continue to connect students and families to direct health services and mental health referrals, wellness support, and family resources. Continue our strong partnership with Mental Health Partners, Clinica, and Family Resource Schools to provide school-based services. Augment after-school programs and parent education to meet the higher needs of these six schools. Continue to evaluate programs for impact, improvement, and staying relevant to the needs of each of the schools. Given all that we have in place and is going well, we recommend focusing on expanding upon our existing systems with the current models that we have in place. Thank you so much, board members. That concludes our presentation. We are happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you so much. Board members, who would like to start? Kitty?
So I just want to make sure I understand. So the schools that are FRS schools, we're applying for a grant to add the 21st Century to that? And so would there be two programs going then at those schools, or how exactly would that work?
At the FRS schools, Jermaine? So I partnered closely with Wanda at FRS in writing the grant and in coordinating how we would work together, and we even, we would redesign some of the positions. We would make sure that our positions complement each other, and we would continue to work collaboratively at each center.
So would that mean you don't need as much of that grant funding for the schools that already have FRS?
No, we would, because it would go into the after-school programming. And this way, FRS could put more of their resources into mental health support. They could provide more mental health services to families and more family support. Thank you. You're welcome.
Beth?
Thanks for the presentation. Just a quick question. Sorry. Thanks for the presentation. Are we good? Okay. Thank you. Third time. I'm really grateful. So I had a quick question. We talked at a previous meeting about our wellness centers that are kind of up and running in some of our high schools. I'm wondering if that fits in in any way within this framework or how that looks?
It's an interesting question. You know, with the six schools where we've applied for the grant, Centaurus would be the only, because the wellness centers are going into the secondary schools. I think that, you know, the wellness centers, you know, add to the continuum of services and support for students, and these programs are more around, at least the 21st Century expansion is more about around after-school types of supports, whether academic. But I'm sure there'd be some coordination with any social, emotional needs that the kids would have with the entire team at Centaurus, which would include counselors, mental health advocates, and the mental health advocate who'd be manning the wellness center. Jovita, I don't know if, or Bianca, if you wanted to add anything to that? Does that kind of feel like how you all would have been?
Exactly. Nicole?
Thanks for that presentation. I think, given the volume of changes we're going to be seeing in the years ahead with expanding our bilingual schools, with new literacy curriculum, new math curriculum at these elementary schools, that it's wise to double down on what's already working within the district rather than taking on something brand-new at this time. So I appreciate that, that approach with this. And I really like the fact that we are leaning on our community partners, who will become increasingly beneficial to us and our families and our students in the years ahead. Similar to Beth's question, thinking about Clinica and Mental Health Partners and some of the services that they provide, a couple months ago, we received an information item on the online health services program, and I'm wondering how that might work in conjunction with some of these other services, or if there's going to be overlap or redundancies, or if those will not be provided in these same schools that have more direct-line services to some of these local established healthcare services.
I would say we're still waiting on what, to understand whether or not we'll have the grant funding to run Hazel Health. I think that, but that's the right question to be asking, right? I think that the question is, if you invest in Hazel Health, are some of these services becoming, you know, a duplicate type of a service, right? And as we've clearly established over the past few meetings, and with the idea that with declining enrollment and budgets getting tighter, you know, how do we make sure that we're more efficient? So I would say that that wasn't taken into consideration when applying for this grant. But if we were to get Hazel Health, depending upon the grant funding, you know, we could do just high school students, we could do middle and high school students, we could do elementary, middle, and high. It would just depend. And so we're still waiting on to finalize that information. We should have that information for the board within the next couple of weeks or so.
And then, thank you for that. One last question. So if we do not get the grant to roll out the expansion of the 21st Century programming, we would not be taking money from the general fund to do that. We'll just wait and see if we get the funds in a subsequent application for that grant?
Currently, we don't have this built into our budget. And so if we weren't able to get the grant, I mean, we feel like that we have a really good opportunity because of the results that we've shown and the investments that CDE has provided to us through this grant process. But if we don't, we will have to just kind of get together with our partners, reevaluate, see what options are available. But right now, there is no general fund dollars that are being budgeted or allocated to this.
Thanks. That's all.
Outside of the current dollars we spend on Family Resource Schools.
I feel like I just somehow missed some of the basics. So with the 21st Century program, is that available to anybody who goes to these schools or just the FRL students? And what exactly, like, what is the comprehensive package that it gives to kids?
It is available to all of the students, but we do prioritize the students who, for example, might need tutoring if they, and we work with the principals at each school to select the children that need the most academic support. But then, it is open to every other student. And usually, we have very high participation in the current schools that we're in.
So how many kids do you imagine that you would be able to support? What percentage of schools or what number of students at each of these schools if this grant comes through?
I hope to be able to, we should be able to serve at least 100 kids a day in after-school programs or more with the funding that we receive and the partnership with FRS.
And how long does that last after school?
About two hours. It really depends on the school. When I worked with Centaurus and Angivine, that might look a little different because it's upper grades, but it's typically about two to two and a half hours a day after school.
Sorry, just one more. If this grant comes through and this is all successful, do we envision a long-term strategy, I'm not sure if this is for Jovita or Rob, of putting this out across all of our schools, or do we imagine only targeting these higher-need schools?
You know, I think it comes down to the success of the additional rollout. I think that, you know, our real hope, as we think about academic return on investment and, you know, closing opportunity and achievement gaps, the idea of high-quality after-school programming at schools as a high-leverage strategy, I think makes tons of sense. You know, we don't have the dollars right now to scale that, so we would have to take a look at within our budget to see what it is that we would do, stop doing, so we could start doing this. But I do think it's certainly a viable strategy. So the hope would be, if it's working, grow what's working. To the extent that all schools would qualify for the 21st Century Learning Grant, I think there's a limit in the application, so we just have to look at different funding sources.
Okay. Well, thank you so much, Bianca and Jovita. That's great.
Thank you.
And Rob, are we ready to move into board member compensation?
Yes, we are. As we are transitioning over from Bianca and Jovita to Kathleen, board members, as you'll recall, this topic has come up a couple times during our board prioritization. We felt like this was a great time to engage the board in this, or give the board the space to have this conversation. Kathleen has done some research, and we'll share that with you in the slide deck, and then give some space for you all to have a conversation in regards to next steps around this. And so I don't want to take away from Kathleen's presentation, and her computer's coming up, so with that, I'm going to turn it over to her.
Good evening, members of the board. Nice to see you. I feel like I've had a lot of opportunities from this table this year and the past few months, but I'm glad to be back to talk about board member compensation. And there actually has been a little bit of action in this area, so some new developments at least to talk to you about. So the board may recall that nationally, there really is no agreed-upon standard for how board members are regarded and compensated. At the bottom of this first slide is a link to NSBA's 2021 presentation, where they really went through an inventory of what state laws say about how board members. Is it not working for you? And I just fixed it. Okay. Well, I'm happy to distribute that again to the board directly and just post it separately with the board agenda item. It really, there are not a lot of states that compensate their board members with a salary. There are just a handful, six, that have some level of annual salary or compensation. The majority are where Colorado is now, which is they permit some compensation for certain activities. Historically, in Colorado, under our state statute, so it was within our school board education code 2232-104, really identified school board members as volunteers who were permitted to be reimbursed for necessary expenses. This is something that every board in Colorado does, to my knowledge. When their board members go to conferences, specific events that they are required or asked to attend as part of their board work, they're reimbursed for the expenses associated with that. So that's pretty typical. In 2021, we had a bill go through the Colorado Legislature that authorized additional areas of compensation. It really does put Colorado within that majority of the country that has this permissive compensation structure. It's limited by the statutory language. You can compensate board members for board meetings, other official activities and duties, including, but not limited, when they read it that way, right, to those that are conducted with a majority of the board present. There are limits in Colorado law, so the most that could be compensated is up to $150 a day, up to five days a week, for a total of about $3,000 a month. There is language in the statute, too, that would automatically increase that amount consistent with inflation and other adjustments to the labor market. When we look at that compared to other Colorado officials, thought it was pretty interesting, actually, to look at some of these. I'm not sure I ever had. So on the right side of this slide is the calculation for elected official salary. I know you can't read it because it's tiny, but I'm going to tell you what it says. Or you could. So this implements a provision in Colorado law which makes our elected state officials' salary contingent and related to judicial salaries. I've never seen anything like this before. So the governor gets 66% of what the Chief Justice of the Colorado Supreme Court would make. Right, I know. I did the same thing. My eyebrows did that, too. Judicial salary, then, so the Chief Justice of the Colorado Supreme Court makes $203,988 a year. The governor's permitted to make up to 66%. So his official salary this year is $134,000 and some change. And then you'll see the same. So the lieutenant governor's salary is based on a Class B county court judge. governor's salary is based on a Class B county court judge, and so on. On the left side, you'll see what some local officials are paid. So, Boulder City Council members are paid $239.40 for 52 meetings a year, whether or not they go to those, because that just became a record-keeping problem for them to pay on attendance. They get it per meeting. Yep, and that's what you'll see in most states. Honestly, they do it a per-meeting rate like that. But they're also given access to employee benefits, Boulder City Council. State legislators earn $43,977 annually, start this year. Denver City Council members are paid over $100,000 annually, and the city council president makes $113. So, it just gives you some context for what other officials make. This would be a good time for me to have worked with Randy Barber on a pre-recorded, like, Visa ad, where we talk about how school board members are priceless, because we know that there is an awful lot of work that goes into being an effective board member. And we'll talk in a second about how DPS is viewing that, because they have been the busiest on this lately. So, when I first prepared this presentation several months ago, it, there had not been a lot of activity since 2021, when the bill was first passed, but we've seen a recurrent, a new flurry of activity. So, Adams 14 has talked about it, but they haven't actually voted. Cherry Creek, interestingly, which always has competitive elections, typically more than one person for each seat, they passed a resolution in September of this year stating that members will not receive compensation. So, they acted on it, but not in the way perhaps that the bill sponsors had thought about. When I look around at other boards that haven't spoken publicly, or I couldn't find a board agenda item, we see that a number of them continue to have on their website this language that Jeffco and Adams 12 has, that says, "Board members are not paid. They give freely of their time to serve the community." So, neither of those districts at this point is having a conversation about board compensation. So, who has taken action? So, Sheridan was one of the first school districts that voted on this. Sheridan, interestingly, it's a little school district just west of Inglewood, pretty small geographic location, and they have a long history of vacancies on their board that they cannot fill, election after election after election. They were a four-member board for most of the 10 years that I was at Casby. So, they were one of the first out of the gate. They did adopt a policy that permits compensation of $150 a day, which is that statutory amount, or a half-day rate. But last year, all five board members put together were only paid a total of $1,650. And I think that's one of the things that we see, even in a lot of the state legislation, is it's okay if a board member declines. So, it sounds like in Sheridan, they're just not seeking that compensation for all of the activities that they're engaged in. In August, Aurora voted. This was the highest amount that we'd seen anybody really vote in, of up to $450 a month, for the $150 daily rate, up to three days a month. Because they adopted it in August, that resolution will go into effect after the next board election. And that's the way the state law was written, so that school board members can't give themselves a raise, can't compensate themselves in office until after an election. So, we pass the policy, and then, then the board would be able to access it after the next election. So, DPS so far is the most, are looking at the most compensation for their board members. And I thought it was really interesting that the DPS board members, as part of the media coverage, talked about how they spend their time, and how much time they spend on their school board work. They said they spend an average of 10 to 40 hours a week, that they spend an awful lot of time on email. I might have sent one or two. My child's graduating next week, so they'll be finished with me. I don't account for all of those, but they do have 10 to 40 hours a week that they spend on board work. So, their new, their, their current proposal is just permitting up to $750 a month. I wanted to make sure I was reading it right. And then, in this fall, they, one of their board members introduced a new proposal that would up that rate. It would allow $150 a day, five days a week, except for July, when they don't meet, for up to $33,000 a year. It pretty instantly became controversial at their meeting, and they tabled it, and have not put it back on a board agenda. So, we're not sure where DPS will land, but they're at the furthest end of the spectrum of any of the boards in Colorado. So, what does it take to do this? The, the legislature wrote a bill that specifically said it had to be by resolution. So, we have to do it by resolution, and then we could adopt a policy to implement the resolution. I wish they'd talk to me sometimes before they write these bills. We could just do it with a policy, but by state law, now we have to have a resolution. And then, as I already mentioned, it would apply after the next board election. And that's what I have.
Thank you, Kathleen. My main takeaway is it's good to be the Chief Justice of the Colorado Supreme Court. Stacy, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm still trying to digest, and I've been thinking about this ever since we first brought it up, to see if I, how I feel about it. I'm not exactly sure. But my question is about if, if we did pass a resolution, does that apply to all the board members that are sitting after the next election, or only those who are newly elected?
It would be to all the board members.
So, current board members are actually, would vote on their, to benefit themselves?
Well, I suppose that's true. They would. I think the thinking around the election is if you've got board members who voted for board member compensation, and the public didn't like it, they could cast a different vote at that election and express themselves in that way.
I just, I have a few thoughts. While I appreciate why this statute went into effect, is to hopefully attract those who couldn't otherwise afford to be a board member, I think we would have to do the absolute maximum for it to make a difference for anyone to actually want to run. I mean, $150 is not going to make a difference for someone to run or not, per meeting. I don't know. So, I, I think I'm not in favor. I've been thinking about it a lot. And obviously, we can't, we can't spend $33,000 a year for each board member, for many, many reasons. We'll get the same pushback that DPS did, first of all. Secondly, I don't know where it would come from. We're in declining enrollment. And I think unless it's about $33,000 a year, like a part-time job, I don't see how it would make a difference attracting those who wouldn't otherwise run if it's a financial issue. So, those are just my thoughts, I think.
Kitty?
Thank you. Yeah. I had, Stacy's first question was also my question, so that is answered. And I'll just talk again about why I am so in favor of, in some way, compensating school board members. One, encouraging people to run. And I bet that there are people who save $15,000 would make a big enough difference for them. You know, it depends on what their jobs are. If they, if somebody is a low-income worker, a part-time job is probably not paying them $33,000. It's probably paying them much less. But the amount, we would, if we decide to do this, we could talk about later. Another big thing is that not compensating state board members, not compensating school board members reinforces the fact that we do not value education. We say we do, but as a society, we never want to pay for it. And I think, you know, because people, the members of the Superior Town Council make more money per meeting than this law allows, and they have much smaller budget to oversee, many fewer employees. So, I just think it's partially a matter of, you know, paying for what we value. And I think that's really important, because traditionally, teachers have been women. Traditionally, women have been paid less. We pay our teachers well, but not compared to what they could make with the same amount of education in any other field. So, I feel really strongly about this. I don't have an idea of how much, because, again, I know we don't have just an extra 33 grand per school, board member, sitting around in the general fund. And I do appreciate that we could get pushback, of people saying, "Why do you want to pay yourselves?" But I think there are good, good reasons to pay school board members.
I appreciate that we're talking about this. You're right. I feel like this has been coming up in some form or another for quite a while. For me, I am in support of it, but I, I think it's very important to delineate that we're not talking about, for me, we're not talking about a salary, because I don't think there's a salary, we could debate all day long about what salary someone needs in order to have access to being on the board. For me, this is about more of like a recognition pay, kind of to Kitty's point of, hey, you're devoting a lot of time, you're volunteering your time for the greater good of the community. I think what DPS did, it seems really reasonable to me, as a taxpayer, as a community member, up to $150, up to five times a month, so 750 bucks a month. I mean, I think it's worth noting that 150 bucks is, it's fairly nominal amount of money. I think it actually is less right now than our substitute daily rate, if I'm not mistaken. So, to me, that doesn't feel too terrible, up to five times a month. And that, that puts a cap on people who could possibly kind of take advantage of that system. So, I think that seems reasonable. I would support it.
Nicole?
Go ahead. And just kind of thinking out of the box, and while we're looking at, you know, questions, I noticed when you talked about how Boulder City Council has access to, like, benefits and stuff. Would that be something to put on the table in this discussion in some capacity, instead of doing the 150 a day? To me, I'm guessing that's going to be less expensive, to do 150 a day times five, but I don't know. So, that's a question.
I think the access to employee benefits is a really important question. I don't think that the legislation truly addresses that in the way that it's written. And I didn't look at the city council legislation to see if they have different language that would permit that expenditure. So, I'd want to do some more research into that piece.
You know, I echo that, because I think that you could get into a little bit of a gray area with benefits, even though it might be very helpful to, to community members who are considering running for the board. To me, it feels that 150 bucks a day times five is very clean and very limited. I would, that's why I asked about the benefits, not so much something I'm interested in, but more just a, you mentioned it, so it kind of crossed my mind. Thanks.
Nicole?
I, like Stacy, have some pretty mixed feelings about this. You know, we've been fortunate in BVSD to have folks show up and run for these seats. If you look at the numbers provided by Aurora Public Schools, it's coming out to, for seven, seven more member, about $35,000 a year. DPS would come out to about $55,000 a year, if it was just their 150, five days a week. So, it's not a large sum, but it's not insignificant when we're considering declining enrollment and trying to balance the budget. Maybe we have a balanced budget already, I haven't heard of, but it, it does come into play. And I, I don't know that, I want to get into a debate about what level will be significant enough to get people to come. I think the $33,000, or a salary-type wage, feels well beyond my comfort level, given our conditions of declining enrollment and our budgetary challenges that we are meeting to serve our students. And so, if it is the will of the board to kind of continue to move this forward, I would really want some caps around what that looks like, given, and, and I think, you know, we only meet three days a month. We don't meet five days a month. Are we counting board emails? Those ebb and flow. How do we know, really, what, I would like to get to something very concrete, if it is the will of the board to move through this. So, we have an expectation year over year what that would look like, so we can act in good faith with our public. They don't see what we're doing behind closed doors. And so, that's, I guess, that's really where I am on this. And I'd be curious to know why, looking ahead, as other school districts make this decision to choose to pay their board members, or not to, someone more of that rationale. It's like Cherry Creek decided not to, because they've never had a hard time getting people to run. So, it didn't seem like a roadblock there. Sheridan, the opposite. So, just, I'd be really curious to, as people continue to have these conversations, to be kept abreast of the whys and the how they are coming to their decisions.
Stacy?
If school board members were to be compensated, other than our expenses, which we already are compensated for, just so everyone listening knows that, if we go to a conference, we-
Reimbursed.
Reimbursed. Not compensated, yes. We get reimbursed if we go to a conference, which was stated in the presentation. If we were to get compensated, does that make us a BVSD employee, number one? Number two, when this came up three years ago, before the previous election, there was some conversation among our board about how that might constrain a board member to lobby for something, or to actively campaign for something, because they're a BVSD employee. Can you speak to that?
I can, and this may reflect my age and experience more than anything else. It, to me, does not resonate as a significant barrier. When I think about what the board's liability already is, you're already school officials. You can already be named in litigation. I don't see that it would create any additional liability that you wouldn't already have. I would certainly, before the board took a vote on that, get a second opinion for my legal opinion, because I think that that really would be, that would be the crux of it. I just, I think you're already in the role, and I think it wouldn't change the fact that you are still an elected official. So, even if you're receiving some sort of compensation, you're already clearly within that elected official role. So, I don't, I don't see that as a barrier, but like I said, I would get a second opinion.
I appreciate that. I think that might be worthwhile. And I agree with Nicole about having some, you know, pretty, pretty good structure around what, what do you have to do to get a daily rate? You know, I'm, I'm an independent contractor. My daily rate means I work seven and a half hours. That's my daily rate. And so, is it just showing up for a reception? Is it actually going to a roundtable? Do you get the daily rate for one hour of work? Is it the meeting? I just think there's a lot to discuss about what, what that means, before we're able to actually vote on it.
Okay. I'm definitely in favor of this. Go ahead, Kitty.
So, I have another question. Other than State Board of Ed, are there any elected officials in the state that are not paid? I have not heard of any.
That just sends chills down a lawyer's spine, to be asked to answer a question that says, "Any!" I don't know. I think that as we looked at, or I tried to provide the examples of other elected officials, I think they are largely compensated. But again, let me, let me do a little digging, and I can follow up in writing.
Because that just goes to my point of the value we put on people in education.
Okay. I'm definitely in favor of this, and I have no interest in the state. So, I think it's a tough job, and people don't realize how tough it is, and compensating whoever will be doing this for the next many years is important. I think when we're talking about bringing new people in, we want to recognize that we may be asking people to miss shifts. We may be asking people who are self-employed to give up their time, and that compensating them for that is reasonable. And I want to say that $300 can have an enormous impact on the monthly budget of a lot of people who are- who are living in our city and in our district, especially when we think about things just like the transportation to come to a meeting, the cost to pay for a car, or for a bike, or for a bus, what it means to need childcare, all sorts of different ways that $300 can allow people to participate who currently don't. I do agree that some of the ways that we do this, it's important to do it right. I would love to toss out the idea that I think $150 per regular board meeting is definitely, I think, a floor for this, and $150 for regular meetings or special meetings, I think would be reasonable as well. That would put us at a cap of either 300 or 600 a month. I think that would be one potential option. I would love us to bring maybe that back, as well as, I don't know if Beth wants to also look at 750. And obviously, we have the choice to do nothing, but if we're going to be bringing forward some proposals to consider, I think 150 per meeting without adding in any of the additional things, not union negotiations, not roundtables, just the SEP meetings that we come to, two to four times a month.
I agree with that. I'm, I think that feels clean, and like you said, we want to do it right. I think that if you have three meetings a month, 150 each time, boom, and that's it, kind of thing. That way you're not necess, is that what you're saying? How did you get to the 600?
If we had four meetings a month, that would be, so the cap would be, but we would never have more than four meetings, because we never have a fifth meeting.
Right.
So I think if we're limiting it just to regular meetings, special meetings, executive sessions, but we're not including retreats, or any of the other various things, just to make it clean, that would be 300 to 600 a month, depending on how we-
I think that sounds reasonable.
Kitty?
Yeah, another thing I would support, if we decide to compensate board members, is then for us to use some of that money to pay for our own conferences and transportation, depending on how much we decide to pay.
Nicole?
So, thinking through this, since the majority present seemed to be heading in one direction, I wonder if we want to have a conversation about whether a board member could opt out, and then if a board, if we choose to include the clause, like other school districts do, what would the reporting of that look like? I would want to save some CORAs requests, I think we saw a CORAs request come through about compensa, not compensation, reimbursement recently for board members. So would we publicly post that? Would we not have to post it? Would be something that, you know, people are going to want a CORAs, because they're curious about? Would we want to avoid that by not allowing people to opt out? I can just see how that could be a contentious, and maybe open up something we don't want to, but I would like to be prepared for that in advance.
Stacy?
So Kitty, are you proposing that maybe a source of funding for compensating board members would be to take our travel, the amount that we get for conferences, and use that in lieu of that? I, I don't quite understand what you're saying.
I would say, depending on, you know, one, if we decide to pay, and two, how much we decide to pay, we might say, okay, then we're going to, we'll, we'll take on the expense of our conferences. You know, I don't know exactly how much they cost, but-
They're expensive.
Yeah. But, and I know we have a budget, each board member has a budget, but I'm just putting out there that I think it's something, depending on what we decide if we do to pay board members, we can contemplate and see, is that reasonable, or is that not reasonable?
Because the second part of this question is for Rob, and where would this money come from, if we chose to do this? I mean, it's not budgeted currently, so that, that's the second piece of that question.
So if the board were to discuss this, adopt a proposal, vote on it through resolution, it would give time for us to work in the estimated amount, whatever that would be, into our revised budget in January. And to the extent where would those, those dollars would come from the general fund.
So then it would not be going, going into effect for this? We would just have to pass the resolution by August for it to be in effect for next year? Or, this, because he's talking about January, so I'm confused about that, too.
The board could take action at any time, but there has to be an election between the board's action and when the compensation plan would go into effect. So the board could take action on this in June, or August, or November. Well, November obviously is the election month. But at any point, and I think what I heard Dr. Anderson say, is because the budget is really at the point of being finalized, that it would be a mid-year budget review item.
We, we would revise the budget and report that out in January. I guess my understanding would be that this wouldn't take effect until the new board is seated, which the vote is in November, and then meetings were going to be in December. So we would just have to make those adjustments.
I know we're in declining enrollment, and we're taking care of our dollars, but I guess I'm looking at this and feeling like the maximum amount of money this is taking out of our budget is maybe $40,000 annually, if every member is taking every possible, and we have a cap of 600. And, and I'm not really sure where that's a significant issue in finding, finding $40,000 in our budget. Does that feel like something that's oppressive and difficult to manage?
Well, with a $500 million budget, it's, it's a small fraction. To the extent that, given time to prepare, we could easily work that into our, our budget.
Nicole?
I just wanted to say that I would not be in favor of board members taking pay in lieu of attending the conferences. I think Casby is a really good opportunity to participate, to build camaraderie as a team, to learn about state law, and how to manage budgets, and so I would not want us to be in a situation where a board member decides to not attend a conference because they can keep-
I'm suggesting that.
Because that's, that's what I understood.
I was not suggesting that at all. I was just suggesting that if we get paid, and it's reasonable for us to then red, you know, pay for our own conference registration or travel out of that pay, rather than having an extra budget item, which each board member has for all, you know, conferences. In no way suggesting we should not participate in something that we've been participating in.
But even if you had to use that money to pay for yourself, I could see then somebody choosing not to pay for themselves to participate. So I, I just would like to really stay clear of any of that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
Well, I hadn't thought of that, and it's a good point, so maybe it's a bad idea.
Beth, we are getting close to it, but why don't you go ahead?
Just one quick summarizing thought. To me, it sounds like the, the will of the board so far has, is kind of centered around having caps, and not having an excessive amount of money. I don't think anyone's talking about a salary, per se. So I just want to say that I agree with you, that we, I wouldn't want to have somebody, it gets messy, right? If we're having, you know, now I'm paying for Casby, and maybe it's a barrier, like, I think it's just cleaner, just keep it clean, that's what I want. Clean, simple, really transparent.
Kathleen, you're always phenomenal at listening to us. Talk, talk ourselves into a knot in walking away with something. Do you feel like you have enough to bring back something for future consideration, or do you need more guidance?
No, I think it's been a very helpful discussion, and I'll look forward to getting back to the board on this.
Thank you so much. Oh, I'm sorry, Beth's asking what happens next. Will we see this on our next, Rob?
That's what I was going to talk to you all about. And so it, it, it appears as if you all have shared some thoughts and ideas, some different modeling, some different ways to look at that, with the majority of the board present here wanting to move forward with further discussion. I would say that we would put this on as, as another work session on our fall prioritization. I would, I would work that in there to give you all the time, maybe, maybe more than 30 minutes, maybe even an hour, to work through the details. It would have to be early on, August, September-ish, to be able to get this decided and a resolution passed before the, for the November elections. And so that's the direction I'm walking away with.
Kitty?
One more question about the resolution. So could we pass a resolution allowing compensation, but not having the details, and then put details in policy? Or does the resolution have to have the details in it?
I was hoping I still had the statute open, which I don't, so I'll have to look at it. I do think that the board would have to be relatively specific in that resolution. Certainly putting in place the big components of, what rate are we talking about? What are the activities that we're talking about? And what sort of cap? And then the voluntary, if people can opt out or request it. I think we would need those elements to be in the resolution, to lay the groundwork for the policy.
Did you, so you're saying that we'll have another discussion to create the resolution, and then we'll vote on that resolution?
Yeah, we don't have enough information. I think that there's a general consensus, that there's some, that, that something makes sense for the variety of reasons that you all shared. I do think that what we would do is come back with some general ideas, and a skeleton of a resolution, that we could then marry after further discussion, that we would probably, before drafting the resolution, might even actually, well, it's going to be in a work session, so you don't have the opportunity to take action. You know, the hope would be that we could get to consensus, and so it would, when we, we brought the resolution forward, it would go study action. I mean, that would be the hope.
Okay. Thank you so much, Kathleen. Folks, we usually take a break, it is 6 o'clock. Do you want a break now, or do you want to put, yep, okay, we'll take five.
Is the meeting adjourned?